Calling to order, the town of Fairfield, zoning board appeals public hearing, May 26, 2022. We are performing, we're conducting this hearing in a hybrid format. We have, I think we have live TV and we have WebEx. And for the people that are signing in or dialing in, make sure that you're, you stay muted unless you want to speak at the appropriate time. What I'll end up doing is I will announce, you know, when it is time for people in favor or in opposition for the applications to speak. And if I ask, Rick, is anyone remotely connected that wishes to speak? And at that time, you unmute yourself and just, you know, give me notification, you know, give me your name and tell me at that time, I'm going to take it in order. So I'll be asking first whether you're in favor after the applicant and anyone present has spoken. And then after the response and anyone opposing that speaks and anyone opposing it that's here that speaks, I'll then open it up to the people remote to speak as well. So be patient. We might have a long time for you to wait before we do that. For the people in the room, please make sure that you have muted your cell phones, turn them off or whatever, just so we don't want to have any interference on that. Calling to order, zoning board of appeals, May 26. When the application is called, at that time, the applicant or their agent will present the case. That'll be Attorney Green and anyone else will be speaking with him. Attorney Green, you've submitted some information to us. If you want us to consider other information, please make sure you bring it up to us so we can take it in for the record at that time. If you have additional information, it's just being brought up now. You have some copies for all the board numbers. After the applicant has spoken, there may be some questions and I will then ask if there's anyone that is, must speak in favor of the application. And at that point, if you're in the room, I will first invite the people in this room and come forward, speak into the microphone. When you speak into the microphone, anyone that speaks into the microphone, I'm sorry, but you have to keep your hand on the little button that says push or else it will not be recorded. I know that sometimes it interferes with people that like to talk with their hands, but I apologize, but that's what we have to deal with. Maybe it'll make your point to be more, you know, your comments to be more to the point and more concise, but it's not my, it's not the reason that this would be set up this way. And after anyone speaks in favor, I will then invite anyone who has comments in opposition to speak. And if there's opposition, I think there will be, then Attorney Green, you'll have the opportunity to address those points in opposition. This meeting is being taped and that's required by state law. It's important we be able to understand the tape, so only one person could speak at a time. Anyone who does come forward to speak on the microphone, if you're speaking remotely, please also give us your name and address. If you hear, give us your name and address. Please make your comments to the point, to the issues that are being addressed and heard by the zoning board of appeals as to these two parcels of property. If you're too far off the point, I will exercise my right as the chairman to restrict your comments at any time. And the applicants, anyone who's interested, after our public hearing, we'll probably take a short break and then we'll reconvene our working session and voting members of the board, there's five of us, will be taking up the application and we'll be voting on them at that time. When we vote, pursuant to this application and our law, we're going to need four, at least four members, the applicant needs four members to vote in favor of the application for your application to be granted. If you cannot stay or have to sign off for remote, you're, please call the zoning office tomorrow to find out what has. The matters that we have, there are two matters. They involve the same issue. The applications are very, are essentially the same. Is that correct, Attorney Green? I think your comments would be the same. I will call them both out and you can present your case at that time. General document number one, 2495 Reading Road, map 218, parcel one five, petition of Joseph Cirillo et al. to reverse and modify the decision of the zoning enforcement officer regarding the signature for a certificate of occupancy premises AAA zone. Number two on the general document, 3236 Congress Street, map 152, parcel three zero, petition of Farid Trust LLC et al. to reverse and modify the decision of the zoning enforcement officer regarding the signature for a certificate of occupancy premise AAA zone. Attorney Green?
Chairman? Yes. Yes. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Attorney Tim Hollister here, representing three entities known collectively as Newport Academy. My co-counsel with me is Joanne Cassidy Schutman Goodman. As I think you know from my April 8 letter, Newport Academy has a jurisdictional objection to these petitions to the board, hearing them on the merits. I would respectfully ask permission to speak first to explain that objection on the record. Point being that there's no, really no point in talking about zoning compliance if there is no issue of zoning compliance and I will represent, I can do it in less than 10 minutes if the chair will give me permission to do that.
I think that since you had submitted a letter, one of the issues is whether we can even hear this. And pursuant to the statute, I think we can hear it because of the decision of zoning enforcement officer. Some of your arguments relate to the merits of that issue. So I don't want to have two arguments on, on something like that or two presentations.
Well, it is a jurisdictional objection. We are, point, the point of the letter is that there is no order, decision or action of the zoning enforcement officer for you to review. So it really should not be, the claim of my letter is that you should not be proceeding with this. And I just think it would make more sense for me to put that on the table first and have Attorney Green respond to that. So I'm just respectfully asking permission to do that. Obviously, I'll abide by your ruling, but.
Attorney Hollister, I'll allow that, but let's just keep it strictly to that issue.
All right. I will again try to do this in less than 10 minutes. The background is that Newport Academy owns 2495 Reading Road and 3236 Congress Street. Both properties were purchased in January of 2019 for the purpose of establishing and operating a so-called group home, meaning a single-family home in which housing and mental health treatment would be provided to young adults with depression, anxiety, trauma and similar conditions. Each resident, therefore, would be an individual with a disability within the meaning of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which I will refer to as the ADA and the Fair Housing Act, Federal Fair Housing Act, the FHA. One of the express purposes of the ADA and the FHA is to overcome local land use laws that would prevent the delivery of mental health treatment services in a residential setting, such as by limiting them to industrial or commercial zones or requiring them to obtain discretionary land use permits that are not required of a single-family residential use. In March of 2019, the town issued building permits to allow minor renovations to each group home so that each would meet the state building code. Building permits were based in part on the town staff confirming that the delivery of mental health treatment in residential home must be allowed by the town to comply with the provisions of the ADA and the FHA, even though a group home is not specifically listed as a permitted use in Fairfield's AAA zone. As some of you will recall, in June of 2019, first, then first selectment tentor obtained an independent third-party legal opinion from attorney Howard Bloom in Westport, which confirmed this requirement that the group homes should be allowed, and this board received a copy of that letter. Attorney Green, representing several neighbors, then appealed to this board. We had a hearing in this very room in September of 2019 and the board denied both appeals, one on timelessness grounds and one on the merits. And though those appeals were, the denials were appealed to Superior Court, where they were still pending, with a lengthy pandemic delay among other issues. But while those cases were proceeding in court, Newport obtained from the State Office of Health Strategies a permit to operate at each home as what is called a mental health residential living center or MHRLC. The specific permit issued is called a certificate of need, which confirms both the need for the treatment service and the ability of Newport Academy to provide it. Now, also in 2020, the first selectman, then Ms. Kupchak, ordered town staff, including the zoning enforcement officer, not to, not issue any further permits to Newport until the zoning cases in the Superior Court will result. As a result, those certificates of occupancy were issued and later in 2020, the town attorney Fairfield issued a letter reiterating that position. In January of 2021, Newport filed a federal court anti-discrimination civil rights action against the town under the ADA and the FHA for withholding the certificates of occupancy, claiming for injunction damages for delaying of the opening and the operation. Now, in February of 2022, this year, Newport and the town settled the federal case and that settlement agreement is attached as exhibit C to my April 8 letter. I'll point out the settlement is final, it's not appealable, and I would note that Attorney Green's clients did not intervene in that action and they are, as town residents are bound by, as you are as a town agency. Now, I need to digress with a little bit of law. The ADA and the FHA are federal law. Under the U.S. Constitution's supremacy clause, federal law, if it conflicts with state or local law, takes priority, it supersedes or, legal term being, it preempts state law. The ADA and the FHA have a mechanism called a reasonable accommodation, where towns can be required to grant an exception, exemption, waiver, whatever you want to call it, to their local regulations, zoning regulations, to accommodate people with disabilities. And a common example is providing access to mental health treatment in a residential area. So a reasonable accommodation is a federal law procedure that supersedes local zoning. So the specific paragraph that I would direct your attention to in the settlement agreement is paragraph one, page, bottom of page one, I'm just going to read the line. The town hereby grants, town of Fairfield hereby grants a reasonable accommodation to the plaintiffs, meaning Newport Academy, to permit them to operate each of the properties for six young adults with mental health disabilities and shall, within four business days, issue certificates of occupancy for each of the properties. And furthermore, the town will cooperate with Newport Academy with respect to any additional necessary permits and will treat the properties, Congress Street and Reading Road, in the same manner as any residential property in the AAA district with respect to additional permits and permissions required to operate. So the town of Fairfield this year agreed to a reasonable accommodation, in essence an exception, from the zoning regulations to allow the two Newport properties to operate as a group home for up to six residents with staff and to be treated regardless of the local zoning rules as compliant with the underlying zone, as compliant with the underlying zone, and directed the zoning enforcement officer to issue the certificates of occupancy to document that status. In the settlement agreement, I'll just point out in paragraph six, on page three, I believe, there is a list of operating instructions that Newport agreed to specifically to protect and address the concerns of neighboring owners. So February 4th, just three days after the settlement, the town staff issued the certificates of occupancy, which were attached A and B to my letter. Attorney Green and his clients have now appealed those to this board. So the point is, the jurisdictional point, and then we'll need to go through the background to set this up. Under the general statutes, a property owner may appeal to this board and order, quote, order requirement or decision, unquote, of the official charge with enforcement of the zoning regulations. What that means is that if the enforcement official interprets or makes a judgment about zoning compliance, then the neighbors may appeal to this board and ask it to review that decision. In February of 2022, to settle the federal anti-discrimination lawsuit, the town of Fairfield agreed to grant the reasonable accommodation superseding local zoning authority, including any right of the zoning enforcement officer to interpret the AAA zone regulations as, as applicable to Newport's proposed use. So the reasonable accommodation expressly states that the group homes will be, at Reading Road and Congress Street, will be treated by the town as compliant with Fairfield's zoning rules and therefore the town directed its zoning enforcement officer to issue the certificates of occupancy. The certificates of occupancy did not therefore result from the zoning enforcement officer issuing an order to requirement or decision about local zoning compliance, but from the town's agreement under federal law that it must allow these group homes to operate even if not strictly compliant with Fairfield zoning. So the zoning enforcement officer did not exercise any discretion or judgment, but carried out a step compelled by the settlement agreement. So this board, respectfully submit, and since the jurisdictional objection, this board cannot legally make a finding that the Reading Road and Congress Street homes are not zoning compliant or that the number of residents will exceed the limit of the AAA zone that has already been decided and for this board to find in a contrary fashion would violate federal law. You can't, you just cannot overturn the COs that have been issued. I would point out that the settlement agreement, there was a $1.5 million payment. Damages and invalidating the COs would violate the settlement agreement and reopen the issue of damages. Last perspective I would leave you with is three things that Attorney Green has laid out in his appeal papers. That a mental health residential living center is non-compliant with the AAA zoning regulations, that a group home with six residents exceeds by one person the limit on, in Fairfield on unrelated persons living together, and the town and the first selectman had no authority to issue the COs. Each of these claims is absolutely clearly answered by the reasonable accommodation, signed, sealed and delivered. Reasonable accommodation says that the properties are zoning compliant and validates the number of people who would live there and it says that the zoning enforcement officer is directed to issue the COs. So respectfully, members of the board, Attorney Green's petitions do not present an issue that this board has the authority to review or overturn. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me make them.
Attorney Green? On that point, some of it overlapped. Our very.
Where's jurisdiction?
You can hear this. For the record, Joel Green represents. Attorney Hollister raises, most federal, with respect to arguably the jurisdiction of this board. First of all, I would submit, in the jury. Having said that, very simply, the appeal that we are presenting is troubling by the zoning. We believe that that falls squarely with the statutory pursuant eight dash six for this board. Hollister's claims, if and when necessary, are not ones susceptible to this board, what federal law provides. I would suggest, it is a position, my client said, is even found by, that the board was not a party, Attorney Green, this board was not a party to the, it's our position then.
That kind of goes there.
But these are all, to that point, these are claims that could have jurisdiction. That I would counsel this. Thank you. I have to bring this. It's almost, it's a second. CO certified by zoning, zoning law. The COs here, what is being appealed, is that they want to reverse that acknowledgement, that signature, that sign off. How it got there, my book's issue, eight dash six, this is an order requirement or decision made. There's nothing in the statute that says it has to be interpreted by him. You said that they are, but it's a decision, it's a handwriting, it's an order, it's a signature, it's approving CO as being zoning compliant. I thought it's some of the arguments, but well, we can go more to the merits on it. That's why I was hesitant on presenting the jurisdictional issue first, because I understand that's some of the arguments. My opinion, we have jurisdiction to decide this. How we decided, they're going to have to convince us to present the arguments, but eight dash six gives us the powers and discipline act of a zoning official.
So to be clear, the force and effect of the CO comes from the, from the zoning official. Therefore, we have.
They have to sign.
They have to sign.
Yes. Oh, yes, if you believe that the board has jurisdiction to hear the appeals.
Right?
Yes. Okay. There.
No.
Yes. We have jurisdiction, Attorney Green? Sorry, I forget anything. Sorry about that. We have jurisdiction, Attorney Green, present your arguments and presentation on the application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, members of the board, staff, my name is Joel Green. I practice law in Richmond, with the Law Offices of Green and Gross, as my colleague last week today. It's our pleasure to appear before the board on these appeals on behalf of, with respect to 2495 Joseph Cirillo and Tracy Cirillo, 800 Banks North Road, Sally Cummings of 2436 Reading Road, Igor Josa of 2493 Reading Road, Anita Marzel and Frederick Keever of 2576 Reading Road, Barbara Mayer of 720 Banks Road North, Sidney Watrous of 650 Banks North Road. As to the appeal with respect to 3236 Congress Street, we appear on behalf of Farid Trust LLC of 3245 Congress Street, Brian Gleason and Sarah Gleason of 3131 Congress Street, Brett Stern and Barbara Stern of 3282 Congress Street, and Richard Sudock and Andrea Asusso of 217 High Point Lane, in support of these appeals. Attorney Hollister made reference to three entities that will be referred to as Newport. I agree with that convention, we'll use that going forward except where it needs to be distinguished. I'd first like to give the board some background on how we got to this place. In January of 2019, Monroe Real Estate purchased the two properties, 2495 Reading Road and 3236 Congress Street. Monroe Real Estate is a subsidiary, a company owned by the Carlisle Group, which is a private equity fund with some $9 billion of revenue and $3 billion in profit in 2021. It's a sophisticated operation with a sophisticated business plan, as we've come to live, referring to Monroe Real Estate. In March of 2019, Newport appeared at the counter through its contractor with applications for building permits to do work for change of use from a single-family home to what was characterized as, quote, a group home, close quote, pursuant to R4, which is a category under the building code. At that time, they were seeking approval of zoning compliance on their building permits so that they could go forward with their business plan for these properties. It's our position, the position of my clients, that Monroe Real Estate was not truthful that day. Newport was not truthful in their representations to staff at the counter at the zoning department. The point is, and as we're going to discuss at length today, Newport is not a group home and that is fundamentally at the center of our presentation today. A group home is completely different from what Newport was proposing for these properties. A group home is a residence occupied by persons sharing a common disability. A group home is where people live in an environment that provides a supportive environment and assistance with daily living. It's where people live because they need it and benefit from the community environment. They are residents, they are not treatment facilities, and that is the departure point for this discussion. Again, a group home is distinguishable because the people aren't living there as an incidence of receiving treatment. And we're talking about places where people go to live as residents versus where patients go to stay because they're receiving treatment. That is the key distinguishing factor. And the law says that people needing that sort of living arrangement, a group home, are viewed as families. And the law says that the number of residents living in a group home may exceed the maximum number of unrelated individuals who can live in a single-family home because they're treated as a family in a single-family residential district. And they cannot be discriminated against due to their disability. So Monroe Real Estate, Newport lied when they said they were going to operate group homes and in doing so, they got their building permits. So it was calculated to get their building permits and, as this board recalls, individual citizens of Fairfield took appeals from, from the endorsement of the building permit. The, basically, what, what Newport is truly intending to operate at these facilities are facilities where people receiving treatment live. They live there as an incidence of receiving treatment. They are privately funded, mental health, residential treatment facilities. They are not group homes. And if there's any doubt about our interpretation, if there's any doubt about the way we are interpreting this, my clients and I, group home versus a treatment facility, the state said, you must apply for a CO. You have to apply for a certificate of need. And a certificate, certificate of need is typically something that is applied for, and I'm going to generalize, but for hospitals. Is there a need in the community for that facility versus a group home, which is treated as a family and is, does not go through a CON process? And Newport filed an application for a certificate of need and we learned a lot about their plan from their application. What Newport is proposing to do in these homes is to have six patients living there who would be receiving treatment on-site. And there'd be eight to 10 staff every day and professional staff at night. And again, it is a treatment, it is a residential treatment facility. And, as we'll get into, the patients pay $1,100 a day to get treatment in that facility. So in our view, and to simplify it, Monroe is in effect seeking to operate what is akin to a hospital in that, in those homes. And really, it's a place, once again, where patients live as an incidence of receiving treatment in that home. And it's not about the profit and at the end of the day, the fact that they are making exorbitant profits on these businesses because it is really. So in our view, and to simplify it, Monroe is in effect seeking to operate what is akin to a hospital in that, in those homes. And really, it's a place, once again, where patients live as an incidence of receiving treatment in that home. And it's not about the profit, and at the end of the day, the fact that they are making exorbitant profits on these businesses, because it is really in the form of a business. That's not the point. The point is that in Fairfield, the zoning regulations say that you can have a hospital in a residential zone. Our regulations do say that you can have a hospital in a residential zone, but our regulations say that it is not as a right, and you have to file an application for a special exception pursuant to our zoning regulations. And when you file a special exception, there is a process where a public hearing is held, and there are standards in our regulations that are designed to balance the need for a treatment facility or a hospital in a residential zone against the rights and the right to quiet, peaceful use and enjoyment by residents of their property. And by the way, special exceptions apply to things like universities, they apply, again, to hospitals, they apply to facilities of the town. And there are standards in the law, in that public hearing, where the commission considers traffic, safety, access for emergency responders, impacts on property values, noise, character, and all of those, and all of these standards where it is determined whether it is an appropriate use in a residential zone or not. Monroe Real Estate Newport Academy refused to apply for a special exception permit. And in the fall of two thousand twenty, in the fall of two thousand twenty, Newport Academy asked for certificates of occupancy for these facilities. And once again, the state said, this is not a group home, this is a facility where you need a C O N. But let me take it one step further. In November of two thousand twenty, our town attorney. Our town attorney wrote to attorney Hollister. And he said, and this is, I submitted this into the record, and unfortunately, it went in yesterday, so you may not have it, but, "I have been receipt of your October thirty request for issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the group homes at twenty four ninety five Reading Road and thirty two thirty six Congress Street. Please be advised that COs will not be issued on the following basis. The building permit authorized by the planning director and upheld on appeal by the Fairfield CBA was for a group home, as defined in Connecticut General Statutes eight dash three E. The certificate of need issued by the state was not issued for a group home under the statute, but rather a mental health care facility pursuant to state regulations. Furthermore, it does not qualify as a protected group home under the Fair Housing Act. Accordingly, the use falls outside of the provisions of both eight dash three E and the Fair Housing Act. Newport Academy will therefore need to submit an application for a special exception pursuant to town zoning regulations in order to be in compliance with the Fairfield zoning regulations and receive COs for these facilities." And Newport declined to file an application for a special exception, and instead, as you heard from attorney Hollister earlier, instead, they filed a federal lawsuit against the town of Fairfield and against the first selectman personally alleging discrimination and seeking an injunction with respect to the certificate of occupancy. Newport claimed that it had been denied a reasonable accommodation for a facility to treat patients with disabilities. Now, no zoning official in this town was a party. The planning and zoning, plan and zoning commission were not named as parties. This board, for example, was not named as a party. Mr. Dickor was not named as a party to that action. And the case was actually never heard because the parties engaged in confidential negotiations, and they settled the case. And the results of the negotiations were only revealed when the negotiations were done. And you have the settlement agreement, and it's attached to our appeal. And the settlement agreement agreed to between the town and the first selectman and Newport said that the town shall issue COs, among other provisions, including paying damages. But this was all by settlement. There was never anything adjudicated by the court. And as I sit here today, I have not heard a shred of evidence. In the three years we've been at this, three years plus, I have never heard Newport explain why. They need a reasonable accommodation to accommodate six patients living in this facility versus five unrelated individuals who can live in a home in that zone. And there's never been anything presented in any forum that I've been involved with over these three years as to why Newport needs that accommodation. But I know that through a special exception process, that might come to light, and it might come to light. But the point is, in a special exception process, my clients, and we've submitted maps and we've submitted deeds, would have an opportunity to hear how and why Newport needs this accommodation. And my clients would have an opportunity to share their views and their perspective of potential impacts on their properties. And presumably, the zoning commission would act on the application appropriately. But, and that's what we're really asking here. We're asking this board to find that there was no authority to sign the CO. And once again, for the reasons I've stated, there was no basis to impose upon the zoning enforcement officer the obligation to sign this, and that Newport should follow the same process that all such facilities must follow in our town. So we ask you, again, to reverse the decision approving the COs. Now, so I've talked about the special exception and that everyone would get a chance to be heard, and let me just get into a few of the arguments that we made. First of all, it's our position that the zoning enforcement officer only has power to enforce, not waive, the standards imposed by the zoning regulations. So, and you'll see this in our appeal. So basically, it's our position that the zoning enforcement officer does not have the authority to waive those provisions that limit the number of residences, number of individuals living in a residence. The zoning enforcement officer doesn't have the authority to say six patients can live in this facility. And, and again, I'm sorry to keep pounding on this, but the zoning enforcement officer was not a party to this action. And there's no basis upon which to impose that obligation upon the zoning enforcement officer. Also, it's our position that the first select woman and the town had no power to waive zoning standards. As you know, you meet every month, and you're familiar with eight dash six, and you hear me mention it every time I appear before you in sight of the statute that says the authority to waive the effect of the zoning regulations lies with this board pursuant to section eight dash six, and doesn't lie in the context of federal litigation between, once again, the town and Newport, and certainly doesn't lie in a settlement that's basically negotiated in secret. And once again, there was no finding by the court that the town did anything wrong in this instance. This was a settlement. And the court also made no finding that Newport had demonstrated a need for a zoning waiver as a reasonable accommodation for disability. And once again, there's no authority to bind the zoning official through an agreement that the zoning official was not a party to. So zoning enforcement officer in the town acting through the selectmen. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, but once again, the town doesn't have the authority, the town itself, the town as a party in litigation, doesn't have the authority to waive the zoning regulations. Newport's proposed use is not a residence for one family, which would be permitted in a triple A zone. Newport's proposed use is for a treatment facility, which is a form of healthcare institution like a hospital that is potentially permitted, potentially permitted by special exception. It's not a group home. And once again, the state said you have to get a C O N, and you have attorney Baldwin's opinion in the record. Newport has not demonstrated that it's entitled to a waiver of the standards in any forum that I'm aware of to accommodate or to allow persons with disabilities to rely on it. Because once again, it's not a residential group home, they haven't demonstrated the need for an accommodation. And so Newport has not demonstrated the right to have this use. So at this point, we are asking you to, once again, sustain these appeals and reverse the decision of the zoning enforcement officer to approve these and sign the CO. I'd like to discuss just briefly the issue of agreement. On the issue of agreement, we have submitted, I indicated in the petition to the board that each of the appellants reside on properties that abut or are within one hundred feet. I have since signing that document come to realize and learn that two of the appellants do not, in fact, abut or live within one hundred feet, and that includes Sidney Watrous and Sally Cummings. However, they reside in vicinity and within close vicinity of the property, but not within one hundred feet. We have submitted into the record the emergency responders' records for other similar facilities in the town of Fairfield, just to, for the purposes of demonstrating sort of the potential impacts of a facility on the properties of these individuals who don't live, weren't agreed by statute and automatically agreed under our law. And once again, if you abut or within feet, the law provides that you are automatically statutorily agreed. But we wanted to submit that into the record to demonstrate sort of the frequent access to these sites by emergency responders responding to various calls that is all in the record. As the, and you have the findings in the C O N settlement, which show sort of the level of staffing and the level of occupancy. Once again, six residents, six patients living in these facilities, eight to ten staff people every day, staff at night. And as you can imagine, with a facility like this and the experience of the board, sort of the comings and goings of all of the needs that residents would have at a facility in terms of food and service and all the, sort of the comings and goings of it, when it's basically a commercial facility in a residential zone. So we would hope that the board would find that these individuals were not statutorily agreed or nonetheless agreed by the facility. I did provide you with the town G I S map excerpt, which shows the proximity of these properties to the proposed facility. So we would ask that you make that finding. The timing of these appeals, these appeals were clearly brought, well, within the thirty day period, and that's appearing from the record, the dates, and that's in the application. So with that, we are once again asking you to sustain these appeals and reverse the decision of the zoning enforcement officer, and I look forward to addressing you on the report.
Thank you, attorney Green. Does the board have any questions for attorney Green on their presentation before we open it up to public comment and fair?
I'm just wondering if the neighbors have objections, or if it would be any legal objection to five patients being in the residence.
The neighbors are believers that the zoning regulations are an expression of what is just fair and reasonable in terms of the use of properties in our town. The planning and zoning commission pursuant to second plan and zoning commission of Fairfield adopts regulations pursuant to section eight dash two of the Connecticut General Statutes, which empowers our commission to adopt regulations. It's an evolving body of law, it's a living body of law, and it expresses what's reasonable. Five unrelated individuals, that is what the law provides. And we also believe, obviously, in the process of a special exception, we want to be heard. We want the opportunity to be heard, and we want to hear. So we want to understand what is being proposed here. And what we don't want is to have this settlement that we had no part in being forced upon us as neighbors or anywhere in our community. So all we're asking for is what the law provides.
The zoning regulations have a definition for family, but I don't see a definition for group home. Is there a state definition?
So there are a number of statutes which invoke definitions of group homes, and, for example, in our last appeal pursuant to eight dash three E, their group homes are defined where it's six unrelated individuals. Six unrelated individuals. Group home means a privately operated, community-based residential facility that serves sixteen or fewer adult clients as licensed by the Department of Public Health as either a private freestanding mental health residential living center or private freestanding community residence. So this is just one of the regulations, this is under the regulations of Connecticut State Agencies. But, for example, there are, I've seen group home definitions which limited it to four. It's depending on the nature of the disability. There is a state dash three E provides six unrelated individuals on condition that it's a program that's operated through the state and approved by the state. So there are group home, there's sort of controls under the statutes. But the definition of hospital. The distinction that falls with all these regulations between group home and what I'll say, hospital or treatment facility is that, once again, the facility, when you're talking about a treatment facility or a hospital, it's that the residents are patients receiving treatment in the facility as opposed to individuals sharing a disability, living as residents there and not receiving treatment. And that's why they had to apply for the C O N, and that's why attorney Baldwin issued his opinion, and that's what we're asking the board to hold.
So I want to understand two things. The first is, is there a specific objection or predication of your appeal based on the nature of the disability? And second, is there any other definition, whether it be term of stay or staff available to patients or residents? A basis for this?
We would never presume to judge this based on the nature of the disability. The law, the law provides as to what disabilities are, and we respect the law on that, and in terms of the state. It's not, it's not about that because it would be a facility that would, I guess, operate perpetuity at the site. That would, but you raised an interesting point. In the facility that Newport proposes, patients would only live there as long as they're receiving treatment. You're paying their eleven hundred dollars a day and getting, and living there as a patient, whereas in a group home, you are living there as just a part of the community. Now, and it's not, you're not receiving any treatment, it's distinguished by that. There's no limit on it. And I suppose that you live in the group home as long as you have that disability requirement, which could be perpetuity.
A question, just to sort of clarify, attorney Green. Watrous and Cummings, they're part of the twenty four ninety five Reading Road application, correct?
Yeah, yes.
And the question I have is, I want to make sure, you're not saying the town did not have authority to bring the board to selectmen to enter into a settlement agreement, are you?
I'm saying that the.
No, the town. No, the town, did the town have authority to enter into the settlement?
The town has authority to enter into a settlement, potentially, I suppose, or certain claims, but it is our claim that the town does not have authority as part of a settlement to require the zoning enforcement officer to sign off.
I suspect that my law says that.
My law is in, in the statutes and in our zoning regulations. Nowhere does it say that the town has the authority. Our, our law says, and it's everything I argued. You have to get a special exception. There's nothing in the law that says that our town
The zoning enforcement officer, he reports the planning director, correct?
He reports to the commission.
He reports to the planning director. And
According to the commission.
And the, for selectmen, right?
I don't believe that that's what they
I believe it's truly the charter. And doesn't, you cited actually one of the regs. And you cited right next to it about the enforcement and the zoning enforcement officer shall be appointed by the commission. It's 2-31. You referred to that. But 2-32 also says the town, acting through the selectmen, the commission, or the director of public works, may take such action as it may deem advisable to enforce any provision of the zoning regulations. That's another regulation that we have to follow, right?
That's correct. However, this is not enforcement.
Signing a certificate of zoning isn't one of the jobs of the zoning enforcement officer. If he doesn't sign it, he's enforcing it. I mean, he's signing it, he's enforcing it, saying it's, it's sufficient under the zoning permits. Am I correct? If you, he has to take one action or the other as part of his enforcement, right?
It would be my position that the zoning enforcement officer and the town in that context has the authority to enforce the provisions of the zoning regulations.
One of the key elements, one of the, one of the few acts, the most important act of the zoning enforcement officer, is whether he or she signs building permits for zoning compliance and then ultimately C O. Isn't that one of, isn't that their carrying out their enforcement actions?
I don't adopt that interpretation, but I would also suggest that we've also raised another ground as to the authority of first selectmen to enter into that settlement.
Any other questions?
As Attorney Lasting reminds me, they cannot waive some
And, and where's that law? Isn't waiving something part of enforcement?
I don't believe that it's enforcement, the authority to waive regulations.
If he did he waive or he didn't?
Pursuant to 8-6, it's this board that has the authority to waive them.
Bury them and waive them for certain limited circumstances.
And I'm not aware of any authority that grants that authority to the first selectmen or to the zoning enforcement officer.
Any other questions? All right, now I'm going to open up to people that wish to speak in favor of the applications. Remember, there are two applications, so it can be either one. If you are focused on one specifically, you can identify that. Anyone from the room first? Is there anyone remotely that wishes to speak in favor of the application? I think I'll let us know, Mr. Becker.
They would put up a D A typically, they can announce themselves as well. They can un-nuke themselves and announce. If anybody's on the telephone and not on a computer, he can press star six to let me hear.
I would like to speak in favor of the neighbors.
In favor of the applications, that's caller user number five. Okay, yes, ma'am. You have to give us your name and your address.
This is State Representative Laura Devlin. My address is 85 Brett Lane in Fairfield. And I would like to speak in favor of the neighbors. And I have listened with great interest to Attorney Green. And I could not agree more with what he has outlined to you. Over the years, that Newport Academy has attempted to open medical treatment facilities within the Greenfield Hill neighborhood. They have misrepresented themselves in front of multiple bodies. Presenting themselves as whatever is most appropriate for whichever body they are in front of, as you heard, coming to our building department as a group home and going to the state as a medical treatment facility. And as Attorney Green outlined so very clearly, a group home is just that. It is a home where people are intended to be a part of the community. They go to work, they go to school. They are part of the community of which they live. In a medical treatment facility, patients come to this facility, get treatment, and then leave to go home. It is not a group home. And I think as well that to usurp the authority of our elected zoning board through a court settlement, which is not outlined as the ability to do that in any of our law or in our charter, that in fact, I would greatly and respectfully request that this body rule in favor of the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Devlin. Anyone else from the, virtually?
Yes, I'd like to.
And give your name and address.
Yep, Cameron Burnham, 26 Gaybowers Road, Fairfield, Connecticut. I am also in favor of the neighbors.
Did you say something specifically or just that you're in favor of what was already said?
Yeah, Representative Devlin spoke everything that I wanted to say. I completely agree with her points.
Thank you, Mr. Burnham. Anyone else remotely wish to speak in favor of the applications, which has been referred to as neighbors?
I would like to say something, Veronica Monahan.
Go ahead, Mrs. Monahan. You need to give your address as well.
Veronica Monahan, 635 Galloping Hill Road in Fairfield. Newport Academy did not purchase these two homes for altruistic reasons. It's owned by a hedge fund, and hedge funds do just that. They make a lot of money. Newport Academy is widely included in several dozen articles and sites pertaining to the troubled teen industry, also known as T T I. There are tens of thousands of survivors of these quote-unquote group homes that are now crying out online and finally in print and have also gone to the government accountability offices and are, and they're finally responding. Patients are kicked out. This is very important. Patients are asked to leave or are kicked out of Newport when their insurance runs out. And, and that's not the case in a typical group home. That's in the case of a medical treatment facility. They no longer have insurance and they're either asked to leave or they're packed up and shipped out. If you look at the Indeed reviews, the Glassdoor reviews, the Yelp reviews, the Google reviews for each of the independent homes that they've owned today, you will be appalled by what you read. In short, this is a for-profit company that's run by a man who has a history of working with even worse group homes, C R C and Acadia being two of them. Breaking Code Silence is a national organization that Newport Academy is widely covered on. Please look up Breaking Code Silence, as you will be seeing their yard signs in Greenfield Hill very soon. There is, they clearly outline the issues pertaining to the patients being treated at Newport Academy, the gross neglect, the mistreatment, and the abuse of patients at these homes, and it's disturbing. The turnover among staff, the neglect, the mental abuse, the inadequate treatment being administered by the staff is appalling. Additionally, drug-addicted individuals are mixed with individuals with eating disorders and those with anxiety and depression, which studies say should not occur. They lied when they said they would be treating only adults with eating disorders because the billing codes they use for insurance also includes drug addiction. Under HIPAA violations, if someone runs away from one of these homes, the neighbors cannot be alerted. And I also just want to note that Newport Academy used Citizens Bank Health Fair Investment Banking. And they put $150 million line of credit against the Congress Street facility right before this lawsuit with the town was settled. The question is, what, was it why? Was it used to intimidate the town into settling the lawsuit, saying they had the money to bankrupt the town and the insurance company? Or is it to construct an even larger facility in town once they were given permission to open? Newport is not a group home. Newport is a business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Monahan. Is there anyone else which to speak remotely? Okay. Thank, thank you. Yes.
I'll try to master the button, sorry. My name's Megan McLeod. I am president of Neighbors for Neighborhood Preservation. I'm also a resident in 2815 Redding Road, so I am five doors north of one of the proposed facilities. There's been a lot of commentary around the room that has to do with a lot of different issues that are rightfully founded, but they don't really address the issue of why we're in this room, which is the enforcement of the zoning enforcement officer. And that power and that role derives directly from our town charter. The issue here is a policy and procedure violation, arguably, that there are specific policies and procedures in our charter that are rightfully decided to give people the authority to do certain actions. Everybody has a role. Everybody's got a salary on this town payroll to execute exactly that. It is not explicitly in our town charter granting the authority for the Board of Selectmen to enter into a settlement that, as a requirement of the settlement, requires a zoning enforcement officer to make a discretionary decision. I think, as Attorney Green mentioned, the power to waive a requirement like special exception permit is not vested in a role that can be dictated by a federal lawsuit settlement negotiation. And the reason that that is not explicitly in our town charter, I would argue, is because that would be a major violation of due process for the people in this town. The entire purpose of having a town charter is to allow people to have rights as taxpayers and as residents to go through a procedure and a process for due process so that they can have access to have their voices heard. The entire special exception permit requirement allows just that. As Attorney Green mentioned, it would have required a public hearing, a traffic assessment conduction, all types of environmental analysis, all types of safety concerns, all these things that the public of Fairfield were not entitled to be, have any say about, have any knowledge of. We're not even certain that it was even required to be discussed because it was behind closed doors in a federal litigation settlement. That screams a lack of transparency and it screams a lack of procedures and process in this town. And I would argue that if we go down that slippery slope where decisions are allowed to be made as soon as somebody files a lawsuit that's threatening $1.5 million of damages, we have absolutely no knowledge of what is happening in our town and how anything could properly be applied for if we're not going to turn to our town charter to give those rights and regulations with a process that people can follow. When somebody goes to submit an application to build a shed in their yard, they go directly to the regulations in this town to figure out exactly how to do it. That's the altruistic way of trying to get something changed, trying to get a special exception. I really feel strongly that the issue of whether or not they're a group home or a medical treatment facility is arguably outside the jurisdiction of this room because it's already been decided by a state agency body. And that's the Office of Health Strategies, Attorney Hollister already mentioned. That was decided long before the first building permit was even applying for. That's the crux of this issue. There was a building permit that was obtained on a false misrepresentation. And the issue about whether something like this would violate a settlement agreement, I would argue, would also be the same issue about that initial appeal for the building permits. Because if we win that appeal in Superior Report, arguably, the settlement would be violated as well. So that doesn't really make a lot of sense if we're going all the way up on a house of cards if the main application of a misrepresentation is going to tumble the entire thing. Policy and procedure has got to be protected in this town. Taxpayers, residents, anybody who does business in this town has to have a place to go to to figure out how it is they're supposed to follow the rules. If we don't have a rule for something, it cannot just be arbitrarily interpreted when it's not explicitly stated in our charter. If we start to do that, who knows what's going to be next door? Who knows what's going to be across the street? Who knows what might just go right up in the middle of this building? It is a slippery slope, and I urge this board to consider. If it's not explicitly granting authority in the town charter, it absolutely would violate due process for somebody to be forced to enforce something as part of a private federal lawsuit settlement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Make sure anyone else in favor of the applications in the room.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. I'm going to address Attorney Green's presentation and the order. The ones I just, I heard them and wrote them down. Obviously, I'm going to address some of what you would call the merits, but obviously, I'm also not waiving or backing down from my original jurisdictional objection. And I would, at the risk of sort of stepping up to 30,000 square feet, I would just simply suggest that if there has ever been a time in the history of this country when we need to expand mental health treatment for young adults, it's now. And the people here who are opposing these group homes are opposing that, I think, for their own reasons, but without looking at the bigger picture of what's going on in our country. Appreciate your courtesy, sir. The issue
Attorney Hollister, sorry to interrupt you, but there are no interruptions in my support ever, okay? You had an opportunity to speak. I gave everyone an opportunity to speak. You do not ever interrupt someone in my hearing room, ever. It's not right. It's not proper. You have a right. You're an attorney. You have excellent attorney. You have excellent representation. It's not your right to represent and interfere with his presentation. Sorry, Attorney Hollister.
Thank you. The issue here is, does this board, as an agency of the town of Fairfield, have the authority to conclude that the C Os were issued invalidly? The issues are, the raised by Attorney Green are the use and the number of residents. And I, as I made point of what I started with tonight, was that the reasonable accommodation has determined those issues conclusively. The use is permitted because the town has issued a reasonable accommodation under federal law, saying it's allowed. They have allowed six people. The, the reasonable accommodation says that the use is zoning compliant, and this board frankly just does not have the authority to, to change that outcome. The, it has been mentioned at the State Office of Health Strategies. I would respectfully suggest that that issuance of the certificate of need sort of puts to the side the issue of whether this is a group home or treatment or number of people. Newport Academy has a final and unappealable order from the state of Connecticut that it may operate a mental health residential learning, learning center, living center, excuse me, on Congress Street and Redding Road. And there's really nothing more to say about that. Now, if I heard Ms. McLeod correctly, I think she said that the certificate of need was issued long before the building permit. That's exactly opposite. The building permits were issued in March of 2019, and the certificates of need were issued in July of 2020. So the next thing I would point out is Attorney Green said that the central claim of his presentation and his client's being here is that what Newport is proposing to operate is not a group home. I would respectfully refer you to page three of each of the petitions that he has filed, section Roman number four, grounds to sustain the appeal. There is no mention, not one word, explaining that claim. He talks about the M H R L C is not being allowed in the AAA zone and six people exceeds five. And the zoning enforcement officer doesn't have the authority. There is nothing in his petition. That was a totally brand-new claim. We had no notice of, and he has not made, and if he hasn't made it in writing in his petition, it really is not before the board. And if he hasn't made it in writing in his petition, it really is not before the board. Let me take a minute to note in section 8-3E of the general statutes. 83E is what is called a safe harbor piece of legislation. The state has identified several specific categories of group homes and said these are absolutely protected from zoning discrimination. But the zoning opinion letter that you got from Attorney Blue in 2019 does a very nice and correct job of saying that just because there are safe harbors in state law doesn't mean that any town may discriminate against other facilities that propose to provide mental health treatment services in a residential setting. So Attorney Green can argue that 83E is not applicable, and he's right, but that doesn't in any way undermine the protections under federal law that the residents of Newport's facilities would be entitled to. Attorney Green says that all they want is, they want the understanding that the zoning rules say that a special exception process, a discretionary decision that balances the needs for treatment versus the rights of residents, that's all that is needed. Reasonable accommodation sets aside the special exception rules. And those of you who have been in the town of Fairfield for a long time will remember the famous McKinney case, 1992 federal district court decision, where it was held that a requirement that a group home obtain a special exception was a discriminatory action on the basis of the town of Fairfield. Attorney Green referred to Attorney Baldwin's November 2020 letter. Exactly. That is, the position taken in that letter was specifically reversed by the town with Attorney Baldwin's involvement, and my understanding is, so he said in November 2020, it's not a group home, and then settled and said, yes, actually, it is a facility entitled to the protections of the ADA and the FHA. Attorney Green and Ms. McLeod are basically ignoring all the federal law and the U.S. Constitution and the supremacy clause. There's a famous story about my friend, Attorney Austin Wolf, whose client was once told by a judge that his physician was completely contrary to the U.S. Constitution, whereupon Attorney Wolf's client said, "I don't care about the U.S. Constitution. I'm a resident of trouble." Well, that's sort of the position that is being taken here, and it didn't fly for Attorney Wolf's client, and it doesn't fly here. The... And Attorney Green said a couple times that the first selectman does not have any authority to tell the zoning enforcement officer what to do. But I would point out that in February of 2020, when the first selectman ordered the zoning enforcement officer to not issue any certificate of occupancy, he didn't have any problem with that. And in November 2020, when the town attorney took that position, he didn't have any problem with that. So there's been quite a switch in Attorney Green's position in that regard. The zoning enforcement officer, other people not being parties to the federal lawsuit. The federal lawsuit was pending for 14 months. Anybody, any institution of the town, any town official, any town resident who wanted to get involved had ample opportunity and did not do so. The... You can talk about a lack of transparency. The town made a decision to not go to trial. It was the town's decision to not... I don't know that it's really an issue of transparency, but it's a decision they did not want it to face a jury trial on a federal civil rights discrimination claim. And probably everything considered, that was the right thing to do. With all due respect, the board member on the end, whose name I can't see, but Attorney Green did not answer your question about whether five residents would be acceptable. And indeed, I guess that's sort of the central point, the hypocritical point being made here by those petitioners and their representatives. So they said they want a special exception process. But does anybody really think that if there was a special exception hearing, okay, well, now we got our process, and we're going to support the group homes? No. They want a process where they have a better chance of defeating the group home. And let's be very, very clear and transparent about that. I'll go back to where I started. The jurisdictional objection has not been addressed in any way, shape, or form by Attorney Green, just avoiding the issue completely. You can talk about the rules and regulations of the town of Fairfield. In this instance, the town of Fairfield made a considered decision to set those rules aside, to have the zoning enforcement officer issue certificates of occupancy. Though nothing that can happen in this room or by vote of this board can change that outcome. Thank you, and obviously, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Attorney Hollister. More questions for Attorney Hollister?
Other Newport Academy facilities?
Similar to some of the towns.
I don't know. All I can point out is the settlement agreement in this case talks about an average length of stay of 45 days. Understanding is that in other facilities, it's longer. For example, Bethlehem, Connecticut, I believe, residents of many, many months, if not over a year. Residents have to have a driver's license in order to be treated?
No, or a... They change the voter registration to that address?
Well, they don't... The legal concept is domiciled. This is my legal voting address. I do my banking here and so forth. They don't have to... My understanding is they do not need to present that level of proof in order to be admitted. Indeed, the agreement says they're going to... Expectation is they will be there for 45 days. Federal law is very clear that that is a residential status. Does this claim that they have to live there for some much longer period of time in order to be considered disabled and entitled to the protections of the ADA and the FHA? That's simply not true.
I didn't see it in the paper. Is there a copy of the building?
It's not in anything I submitted. It is... I mean, the board has a file from the 2019 building permits. But is there a specific question? I've obviously seen them several times.
It was raised that sometimes talking to street vendors to refer as a facility to different effects, to...
No. And I put Mr. Wendt on the spot, but he was the one that endorsed, among others, the application for the building permit, which said we want to make a group home suitable for operation, excuse me, a single-family home suitable for operation as a group home. The specific point of the 2019 building permit was the group home is in a different building code category. Examples are things like, you know, lighting in the hallways and so forth. So the... But I absolutely disagree that there was any misrepresentation. It was very clear right from the get-go what was being applied for. The town understood what was being applied for. And indeed, the proof of the pudding is that what has been done since then has been carried out in accordance with the building permit, witness the fact that a CO was issued, which means the building permit was carried out correctly.
Wish selectwoman Cupchuk was here because she can answer a lot of questions. Just commenting, I wish that, I mean, Cupchuk was here because I think she answers a lot of questions to the settlement. But nevertheless... Oh, so, so just... Would you say, would you say that people who are in hospital are living in a hospital, same kind of this hospital?
It's possible for people to... They're legal residents in a hospital if they're there for indefinite period of time. That's part of the mental health system, yes.
No more questions. Thank you.
Attorney Hollister, stay there, please. I have a couple of questions for you. We had some discussion, and you brought it up, but it's one... Talking about February 2020 and November 2020 actions by the first selectwoman or statements, and then a letter, which we put in the record by Attorney Green from Attorney Baldwin, town, best town attorney, said no CO was going to be issued. And they had the reasons, and you've heard that. Was that the last signature that would have been needed for that certificate of occupancy? The zoning enforcement officer, did you know?
When you say the last signature, obviously, there were five or six signatures needed.
Well, you need building...
Yeah, but I don't know that this town attorney actually signs off on building permits.
No, 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 no. Was the zoning enforcement officer's signature on the building, on the CO, was that the last one that was needed, meaning all other inspections like that?
During this review, I don't believe so because I don't believe a draft certificate of occupancy was circulated. What I can tell you is the fire marshal, Mr. Edmondson, forgetting the names, it's been two years. But we had a verbal approval from the fire marshal and the building inspector. So let me say that again. We had a verbal from one and a written approval from the other. But I don't believe that was ever reduced to an actual copy of a CO that then did not find, was not finalized because Mr. Gackler did not sign it. I don't think it got to that point.
Just, as you know, I was here in September 2019, and Mr. Keegan was. And he's also getting was here, not sitting, but she was listening to that. But just to get something, I just wanted to ask some questions as to, after that hearing, the... And there were appeals made, but their clients proceeded in accordance with starting destruction renovations or whatever, correct?
Correct.
And then it was, was it then, after getting, trying to get the CO signed off, where we ran into this, the other issue of first selectman Cupchuk? And town attorney saying no, directing the zoning enforcement, no. And then the federal lawsuit started, is that the process? Just for this board to understand.
That is correct.
Are the appeals still pending from the 2019 board decisions?
Yes. Judge Stevens issued a stay of both cases in November of 2021 based on Attorney Baldwin's letter saying, he called it an impasse, and basically told the parties to try to work it out. He was, of course, aware, and I'm speaking for Judge Stevens, but he was, of course, at that time aware of the federal lawsuit. And my surprise is that he thought maybe the federal lawsuit would resolve the issue. Long be all it did. So the... We have... Newport Academy, in the last six weeks, has filed a motion to dismiss both 2019 building permit appeals on the grounds that they are moot for two reasons. Number one is, we now have certificates of occupancy that supersede the building permit. And second, we have the federal settlement which supersedes anything regarding the building permits. So we're waiting for an argument date on those motions.
And of course, Attorney Green, I had his clients object.
He has filed the objection. Well, not on the stay. Actually, the stay...
Action to the motion.
To the motion to dismiss, yes. So we're waiting an argument on that.
And historically, was there an earlier motion to dismiss, which resulted in Judge Stevens?
We're basically putting the case on.
And that motion to dismiss was filed by the applicant, correct? And was that based upon first selectman Cupchuk and Attorney Baldwin? Essentially, that you couldn't, you're not allowed to issue?
Frankly, Mr. Chair, there are so many motions. I'm not sure I'm going to give you the right order. I just wanted to speak. I would have boned up on this procedural sequence, but the, I can't tell you. We've been acting under a stay for now for six or seven months. We're trying to bring those cases to an end.
I just wanted to allow this board to act from someone who was involved in this like matter and the prior appeal. Attorney Green will probably comment.
There's still pending, but there's possibility that they will be grabbed, I'm sure.
Any other questions for Attorney Hollister?
I have a quick one. I am just wondering why you didn't apply for the special use permit?
Special use permits are highly discretionary. And if you apply for one and it's denied, the ability to overturn that denial, just as a matter of state law, is very difficult. In this case, Newport Academy, if you will, appealed to a higher authority, the ADA and the FHA, the reasonable accommodation process. At some point, the town agreed that that was an appropriate thing to do and settled the case. And which is why special exceptions are sometimes regarded as a tool of exclusionary zoning. That comes right out of the McKinney case. It's not a process you want to avail yourself if you have a different way to do it.
Just a point of clarification. So your standing of your actions in the application process is not that your facility specifically met the requirements, but the specific path of least resistance?
I hear you're less specific.
So what I heard you saying, I want to clarify, is that you made your application, in the nature that you did and the form that you did, because had you done otherwise, it would have been more difficult to obtain?
Correct.
Any other questions for Attorney Hollister? Thank you, Attorney Hollister. Before the panel act to open it up, as you know, Attorney Green, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the applications? And to make it easier for people listening in opposition to the neighbors that want reversal? Anyone that wants to think against the neighbors who are pursuing this application? Anyone remotely? Attorney Green?
Thank you once again for the record, Joel Green, representing the healing parties. First, I'd like to clarify a few responses by Newport, by Attorney Hollister, to questions by the commission. First of all, there's no question that in McKinney, that case involved a group home, and that was not being challenged. In that case, though, the town had taken the position that a special permit was required. In this case, we are certainly disputing that this is a group home. This is a facility where treatment is occurring on site. That's one. Two, in the pending appeal that is pending in the Superior Court, and just for clarity, what happened in that case is Newport moved to dismiss our appeals based on timeliness, based on... Well, they moved to dismiss and challenged a grievance, and we had a hearing on the grievance, and the court denied. The court found that we were aggrieved parties and that we were timely with that appeal. We had raised a claim that Newport had failed to appeal the town's position that they would require a special exception, Attorney Baldwin's letter, as it was expressed in Attorney Baldwin's letter. It's our position that Newport failed within 30 days of actual notice of that decision to appeal it. Therefore, it's our position that case became moot because the law of the case was basically that a special exception had to be applied for. And that is still a live claim that the court has not adjudicated, and the court has stayed that till, quote, May of 2020. And the court has stayed that till, quote, "May of 2022," this month, render a decision or I suppose to have a status conference, however it's going to proceed. So that's the state of the case right now. To be clear, and in response to your question, five unrelated individuals may live in a home in the AAA district. That's what the zoning regulations say. In order to have a hospital or a nursing home or a convalescent home, or, and this is akin to a hospital, it's a treatment facility, you have to get a special exception. That is our position. In response to, and as follow-up and Chair's question, the essential point here is, when Attorney Hollister said that he would not apply for a special exception because that would be hard, that would be difficult, maybe an appeal would be difficult. But we went to a higher authority. Well, Newport brought a team of lawyers, brought this case against the town. And then this is what cannot happen is in a back room in a settlement between the town and, and Newport, the decision on what a reasonable accommodation is cannot be made in that back room. And to Attorney McCall's point, there are, there is, are due process questions that are involved here. That's critical. I mean, that's the whole point. So while I understand the Chair's position on enforcement, one thing that cannot happen is reasonable accommodations cannot be negotiated in back rooms. And this board should not support that. And to Attorney Hollister's point, that the, Attorney Hollister's point that the town basically found it was a group home by through its actions in the settlement. In the language of the settlement, that is specifically before the commission. And it's attached to our appeal. He defended it as specifically deny and dispute all claims of wrongful or discriminatory conduct, and it is expressly understood that this agreement is not an admission of liability under the Fair Housing Act or under any other law. So the claim that somehow the town said, oh, this is a group home, that's not what occurred here. And once again, there has never been any forum in which this, quote, "reasonable accommodation", close quote, this need to allow, for some reason, to allow this treatment, a treatment facility, allow people with a disability to be treated like everyone. There's never been a forum in which that has been heard, adjudicated, proven, enacted upon by anyone. Therefore, it's our position that first selectmen and the town did not have the authority to do that once again, but they also did not have the authority that the zoning enforcement officer approved this facility in the manner which is. And by sustaining this appeal, by sustaining this appeal, this board would allow my clients due process, the right to be heard and the right, and significantly, the right of Newport to stand up and present its case as to why it needs this, how it needs this, and to what level it needs this facility in these locations. Process, due process, and that's what we're asking for. Just bear with me for one moment. So we've spent a lot of time on this, we've been talking about this, but the point is there is no discrimination that has been demonstrated in any forum. And in terms of requiring this special accommodation, this reasonable accommodation. So we've urged the commission to sustain these appeals and set the appropriate process in motion in this instance. I, well, thank you, I don't have any questions maybe.
Thank you, Attorney Green. Before we have any questions for Attorney Green relative to the rebuttal comments?
Is it the contention of your clients or your case that no treatment or education or approval applied that could be to the exit of a resident in a residential facility takes place?
Sorry.
So if it's a treatment facility, you're stating, you're saying it's a treatment facility that they're going to leave in a certain period of time and turn over this back? Is, are you contending that in a group home setting, professional services aren't made available, treatment for whatever disability or group of disabilities may be in that setting is not provided with the intention of those who have been leaving that facility or that home?
Treatment in a group home, treatment, actual medical or mental health treatment is not provided in the residence? And that's the fundamental distinction here. This is a treatment facility. This does specifically provide that patients living there as an incidence of receiving treatment are treated on site for their disability. And it's not people living in a place who share a disability but don't receive treatment in their home. But there is a benefit to them living together. They support each other. It can be any one of a number of benefits of having people who share particularly sober homes and that sort of thing. It's mutual support, but treatment is not provided on the property. And there's a New London case that speaks specifically to that, where this very point was raised. And I, I don't want to start, again, it's my position that this, this board shouldn't be in a position to interpret case law necessarily, but the point of the case was, point of the case was that in that case, individuals with disabilities were living in these three homes, but they were going off-site to receive their treatment. And that's the great distinction in this case from what Newport is doing, where they are not leaving home to receive the treatment. And when your treatment, course of treatment is up, you're out. As opposed to these other facilities where you can put there in for treatment. That is for all.
Any other questions? I have a question, Attorney Green. The, you shed some light and you talked about not appealing the basis for the, one of your motions, not appealing town attorney and first selectman directing the zoning officer not to sign a CO. Are you saying that they had authority to tell him not to sign a CO, but they don't have authority to direct him to sign a CO?
What happened in that instance is Attorney Hollister was specifically asking the town attorney, and was approaching the town attorney for the CO in order, correspondence between the two of them, that, where Attorney Hollister was saying, we're, we're going to ask for our CO, we want our CO. And the town attorney acts as the attorney for Mr. Wen. And his capacity is the town attorney. And the town attorney issued that letter. I understand from Attorney Glassky that they first approached Mr. Wen, or they approached the zoning department to get the CO and they were denied.
So I understand, the settlement made between first selectman and Newport was, okay, we'll sign the CO, but Attorney says, no, we won't. Is that correct?
Your, yeah, just to put it, put everything in tie.
Yeah.
The town attorney said, we will not grant you CO because you are not a group home, as you said. Your treatment facility applied for special exception. Instead of applying for a special exception, as Attorney Hollister referenced, they instead brought a federal case alleging discrimination, seeking an injunction to require CO.
So was our town attorney involved in those discussions along with our first selectman?
I, yeah, I presume he was. But just to be clear, I'm not aware of any rulings, letters, or otherwise by the town attorney after that, that related to that issue specifically.
Any other?
Right. So I want to, I want to clarify something that I believe that I heard. Was the town attorney acting under the direction of the first selectwoman in denying a CO? Or was the town attorney acting under some other?
The, as I understand it, Newport went to zoning department and said, we want our CO. We have finished our site improvements and we're ready to start treating patients on the facility. And I think that Attorney Baldwin's letter. Attorney Baldwin's letter says. And as I referenced earlier, what happened is after the building permit was issued where, where Newport said, we are a group home, we want a building permit as a group home, and it was signed off, and this answers. A board member, Dishwall's question, in March of 2019, the building permit was signed off, approved for zoning compliance for residential group home for up to six residents, residential group home for up to six residents plus staff. And then, six months, I'm sorry, 18 months later, no. After that was issued, Newport applied for a CON to the state in 2019. And their application for a CON is in the materials we submitted. And in their application, Newport described what they would be doing, and it would, it was not a group home. They were required to apply for CON because it's not a group home. It's a treatment facility, akin, as I've been saying, to a hospital. So, and the opinion by Attorney Baldwin followed that determination as to the CON and also followed our appeal, where it became more apparent that it wasn't a residential home, it was a treatment facility. So 18 months later, 18 months later in November of 2020, Attorney Baldwin, when Newport said, we want our CO, Attorney Baldwin said, it's not a group home. And by virtue of your CN, CON application, we concede that it is not a group home. You've got to apply for a special exception because it's a treatment facility. And that's what we're seeking to get to.
Any other questions? Closing the hearing on the two applications, 2495 Reading Road and 3236 Congress Street. Taking a short break, 10 minutes, and we'll reconvene to discuss and vote on these applications.
Calling back to order, Fairfield Zoning Board of Appeals, we've conducted and completed the public hearing. So now it's our working session for the board members. And obviously, I said before, we welcome people to stay and hear our discussion. And we'll be voting and for the applications to be granted, we need four yes, at least four yes votes from this board for your applications to be granted. And the applications are seeking reversal of the zoning enforcement officer. So a yes means that the zoning enforcement officers signing of the certificate of occupancy is reversed. So to entertain those and discuss them, I need a motion to approve the applications. So both approving and agreeing with Attorney Green's request. So, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Now in discuss. Yes, fortunately. You have to press it, we can't whisper up here, we have to, we have to press it. I tried that, it doesn't work, it almost seems like it's heat sensitive.
Signing whether Mr. Decker had the authority to, to sign off. Whether he had to do that, he has to directly tell you. But it was pretty because the permit issued, so it's all chain up.
Yeah, kind of a little bit different than that. You're looking, that it's first said that basically he lacked the power to, because he shouldn't have, because it should have gone to a special, you know, seeking a special exception. So, you know, he didn't have the power there. And secondarily, that he couldn't sign a pursuit to the settlement. Two issues.
You're stating that's the argument.
That's the argument, yes. That's the argument. And the presentation told a little bit, you, but you hit it in, in one question, one statement, yes.
So is this a group home, or is this a separate facility? We don't understand that it's all the same, so he has no, to disagree.
I think we're talking about the whether, whether they properly sign it. We have another issue on the settlement. We have a situation where we, where we, where the appeals, well, first of all, the building permits were signed back in 2019 for the two properties. That was a, we had a hearing. One of them was deemed untimely, and the other one was denied on the merits to reverse the zoning enforcement officer signing the building permits. We fast forward, they do the work, they're going to get the certificate of occupancy. And the town, first selectwoman, the town attorney said, no, you're not going to get the certificate of occupancy, following the same arguments that the applicants were making. We have a federal lawsuit brought because of that. And we have part of a settlement which the Board of Selectmen by statute and charter are allowed to settle. And I don't think settlements are backroom deals, backroom deal is something shady. I've been involved with many settlements in my career. It's the parties having communications facilitated by a judge or mediator and a back and forth negotiation. It's the town by charter, and that it is authorized, Attorney Green agrees, the town sent a lawsuit. He just says the town can't send a lawsuit and tell that the zoning enforcement officer has to sign the certificate of occupancy. Well, that was an issue in the federal lawsuit. And it was settled. What I find interesting is that we have the applicant and the respondent here, the owners of the property. At various times, they liked the town attorney's opinion. Initially, the applicant, the property owners liked the town attorney's opinion when we were at the last year, saying that it should be signed as a building permit. The applicants here liked the town attorney's opinion and said, you're not going to sign. That resulted in a lawsuit. Part of that lawsuit was a settlement that says, number one on the settlement is to sign a CO. I think first selectwoman and the board have the authority to direct one of the town offices to, to sign the paperwork as part of settlement. I understand Attorney Hollister's argument that we don't have the jurisdiction, but we disagree. I think we do have the jurisdiction to sign this. I think we're fortunately somewhat tied between the two parties here because there is a settlement which. because there is a settlement of which did the zoning officer do something he shouldn't have done? And he did something he shouldn't have. He was devised to that, he reports to the planning director, who reports to the first selectwoman. Now, that's our regulations, that's enforcing our regulations, where the first select, the selectmen, plural, so the board can take actions to enforce our zoning regulations. And if our own regulations say that the town acting through the selectmen can take actions to enforce them, I fail to see how they can't say, sign the certificate of occupancy. If the town has the authority through the board selecting to approve a settlement, that's part of the settlement, I fail to see how our charter and our regulations.
Just said that the authority to enforce the zoning regulations.
I absolutely said it, I read it verbatim in the record from our regulations.
Settlement coming from court.
They're signing it. I don't think, it's part of a zoning officer's job is to review a certificate of occupancy and make a decision on that. Part of the settlement was that this decision needs, a reasonable combination needs to be made on this issue. And he was directed to do that, and he followed the direction. And the town is allowed to settle cases. And we're deciding whether Mr. Decker did something improper or not. I think he did something proper, he was directed to in accordance to the settlement. I can't see how they have the authority to direct the zoning enforcement officer, the town attorney, who acts for the first selectwoman and the board, how he has, they have the authority to tell the zoning enforcement not to do something, but they don't have the authority to tell the zoning officer to do something. Yes, it's totally inconsistent. It's all, it's part of the enforcement. They, you know, the board, all the board members are ex officio members of this board. They vote, but they can participate. If you affect their, they're ex officio members of the planning and zoning. They can participate. And it could often close. She, in my opinion, the first selectwoman, fighting by the settlement, ruled, made the direction in accordance with that. And this is part of the town, this is the town office, under our charter, which is part of the town, the town made a settlement. I don't know how they could go against that. That's my, my problem.
I would, I would agree, and it's, it seems to me unfair that it's, the action is called into question based on chain of command, based on force and effect of a federal court ruling. Hello. And then pursuant to that ruling, things moved in a specific pattern, a specific flow. As the chairman notes, it was done properly. As the highest elected officer, we have to place some trust in the fact that she was in the room. I have to, I have to understand, or I have to hope that that was done in good faith and with the best interests of town Fairfield. So that's where I sit.
Other comments? Go ahead, Jane.
I'm just reading the town attorney's letter, which apparently came well before the settlement. So the things that these states here are factual. So how do you override the facts? There is.
Settlement is a binding agreement. We don't have to be in the room for the settlement, the settlement has been set out in six pages, and it states, the settlement states the obligations of each party. Obviously, the central issue here was reasonable combinations. The settlement was agreed that there'd be reasonable combinations made. And the certificate of occupancy would be signed, I think. I think we're bound by that, we're part of the town, we're a town body. Yeah.
I agree that the settlement agreement is the document that we have to work to in this case. And I'd also point out that in the agreement, it says that the town further will defend in good faith any challenge concerning defendants' issuance of the certificates of occupancy for the properties in accordance with this agreement. And I think that tells us that the town will have to defend this, the issuance of the COs, no matter what happens. And so I think that that dictates a lot, that dictates my decision-making. And here, the idea that the settlement requires certificate of occupancy signed by the zoning enforcement officer. Both are very difficult cases, I acknowledge that.
Jane, I think the problem is that the town, through the first selectwoman, and then her acting through the town attorney was essentially in agreement with some of the arguments of the applicants. Okay? And that's why the applicants liked the decisions in that period of time. But now we have a settlement that puts the hand to signing them. And finding, not finding a reasonable accommodation, but signing this as a reasonable accommodation. There was a dispute. You know, Attorney Green pointed out, and he's correct, it's in every settlement agreement I've ever been involved in where, you know, you're not admitting any responsibility or liability, but your, each party is agreeing to do certain things. And there's a lot of things that the property owners are required to agree to as well as their obligations moving forward. Ryan, it's funny. Thank you.
The settlement refers to this as a mental health residential living settlement. Over and over and over again.
I'm not surprised.
Same time as I said it to you.
I'm just, my understanding is that Newport got that designation by getting that certificate of need from the state.
I mean, to that point, I would simply state that I rather vehemently disagree with the tax taken to obtain either the designation or the the permits and the CO required. However, the decision that was made is my opinion, we're bound by that settlement. And the settlement was made regardless of the designation of the facility in good faith by the people that were in that room. So.
We have a discussion.
It's possible to retroactively define it as a different thing?
I don't know, but I don't think that's.
It's just one thing, if something says.
I, I understand, but there's one thing that we're talking about, and it's signing of a CO, right? That's the issue here, the signing of a CO. The settlement says to sign the CO. The applicants don't want the CO signed, they want that to race. It's a fortunate situation, it's a typical situation, as Lisa indicated. Yes, I agree. But I think that the settlement agreement binds us to uphold the signature endorsing this certificate of occupancy. The one thing that's uniform, they're arguing in the background of why the CO shouldn't have been signed. But the one thing that's uniform is they want the CO unsigned applicants. The settlement agreement requires the town to have it. I think that's the bottom line.
And also that the officer signed that, did so appropriately.
Yes.
Mr. Trump, can you, can you just clarify?
I will clarify before the.
Just clarify, just clarify for myself on the board, the ramifications of a yes, no, no, no.
We're going to be voting now, it's on the two applications together, which would be 2495 Reading Road and 3236 Congress Street. If you vote, if you vote yes, yes means you're reversing the signing of the CO. A yes is reversing the signing of the CO. A no is denying the application. Okay? Right?
No.
Jane? Please.
No.
Mary?
Yes.
I say no, the applications are being denied. Includes our hearing. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the presentations and everyone who spoke.